Called the meeting to order. Any items from the public? Y'all don't want to complain, anything? And the motion to approve the agenda. Whitaker coming today?
We have not heard from him.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor to have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. The assessors office is here. Any board review, equalization, or anything like that? All right, Mr. Street, come on up. You the man. You got mine straightened out, right? You got my stuff straightened out, right?
You know it. If anybody's straight, George. I have actually three parcels. Two of these, I ran a report on our system that shows a hard key, which is basically something that overrides what the system would normally press. And it happens a lot in farm value land because we have to override the system and we'll replace the farm values on top of it. Well, first parcel that I want to ask about is 0110K4.1, which is a strip of land in Winchester Avenue, very close to the storage units that right beside Pack Horse Ford Road, there's storage units, a house, and then this little tiny strip of land. When it was changed over from residential to commercial a few years back, there was a hard key on that land that was never taken off. It had been on there. So I found it and I thought it was best that I go ahead and take that off so it would be appraised with the rest of the land that's around it and not have a separate key on it that doesn't match with everything else. Currently, and it's just vacant land, it has no building value to it. The land is appraised at $5,500, which is an assessment of $3,300. After removing the hard key, then the land should be $1,500 with an assessment of $900.
How big is this one?
Five foot wide, about a hun- yeah, it's, it's wide. They don't go ahead and consolidate it again because it could.
Is it on the house or the, the, in their shop there?
Where the shop is, and then there's a little strip of land and then the house. And this little five foot piece is one. And it should be, it would be better for them, but it's not. So it has a five foot wide piece, it doesn't look, it's not the wrong one.
Shouldn't you have property boundary adjustment be done for it?
It would be best. If they would just sign the paper and be done with it, it would be a whole lot easier instead of getting a separate deal. But as it stands, I have to praise it as it stands, I can't take it.
Sure. So the, the, what's the lady's name?
What's that?
It used to be vendors.
Used to be vendors.
And this is, come on down, this is where Prather's.
Right there, right beside Pack Horse Ford?
Is where there's storage units.
Right.
And then in north, there's a house. And then this piece of land.
North, not?
Yes. Just to give you a place where it's at. But it could be all consolidated in with, and then it would be a whole lot simpler. When it was residential, they had a hard key on it, they valued it, but it should be actually appraised, just like everything else that's around it. Pick it up that way, it should be.
All right. What's your other?
This is.
Who was the property owner on that? Was it still the vendors?
No, this is another, this is another whole property, so.
Who's the name?
This one is going to be, the first one or this?
The first one.
Value Storage Tabor Station LLC.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure we don't have a conflict, that's all.
No, okay, and I'll give you the name of this one.
What's her name, it was all in the?
This is Ad Cleet LLC. And the district of my department is 01928.3. This gentleman had farm value and commercial buildings on it. And over the years, he's actually built out more buildings. So the farmland has been slowly dissipating, and now he's got even more pad sites ready, which basically took away all his farm. But when we took the farm out, code out, we did not take the hard key off, which was another one, so we did it. Now, this one actually is an increase, but he already had an increase because he put more buildings up, so it's. The current appraisal land value is $138,600. Building value of $327,000 for a total of $465,600. That makes an assessment of $279,360. Proposed land value now would be $107,7300 appraised, $106,380 assessed. Building value would remain unchanged, $327,000 appraised, $196,200 assessed. A total appraisal of a building value, building and land is $504,300 for a total assessment of $302,580.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Is he aware of this change?
No. I asked earlier this year, as far as, because he already received a budget. So he already got an increased letter because he had more buildings that he built. And I was told that once they get a notice, that's all you have to alert them.
Isn't that right, Mr. Hess?
Yeah, unless they want to come in to appear.
Okay.
That's their notification.
All right. Okay. Next one?
The final is 0614490. That's one valid bank, East National Association. This is the BBNT right here on corner town. There was a, evidently, somewhere along the line, a renovation had occurred in that building. And we have a code that we can, if a renovation occurs, we can apply a code to it, which takes care of whatever was done. In thought, because we had a tax request on me on this value, I went back over it. And because it was done so long ago, thought it was best to take that renovation code off of that building and just allow it to be like any other building, with the, just an average building with average conditions instead of using the renovation. Because it's been over, the last I found was in 2003 when that code was applied, so it's been over eighteen years since it was. So you have to assume that it's been wear and tear.
Might be ready to renovate in a while.
So that code just basically signaled that it was, everything was fresh and
Yes.
actually done and repaired.
Yes. Currently, the land is appraised for $182,800 an assessment, which means an assessment of $109,680. A building value, three million, $345,500. And it makes, gives us an assessment of $2,6100. A total appraisal then would be $3 million, $526,300. Assessment of $2 million, $115,780. Proposed that the land value remain unchanged. The land would be appraised at $182,800, an assessment of $109,680. A building value now would be $2 million, $788,600 appraised, $1 million, $673,160 assessed. Total appraisal would be $2 million, $971,400. An assessment of $1 million, $782,800.
All right, any questions on that one? All right. Need a motion to approve?
Three motions or one?
This one be good.
Mr. President, I need to accept the assessors office's reexamination of three separate cards.
Motion on the floor to have a second. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Anyone, anything else?
Dan, anybody in motion?
All right, next on our agenda, we have Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal, for presentation of 2021-22 budget.
Mr. President, I mean, there is actually a mistake on Mr. Lang's budget sheet that he did not make. Under commodities, Department of Supplies and Materials, the budget sheet indicates that he increased his budget from $8,750 for supplies and materials to $10,250. And increased uniforms from $7750 to $9750. That's incorrect. The control report shows beginning balance of $10,250 and $9750. So your budget analysis that I've provided to you is correct. The budget sheet itself is not correct. So that's a long way of saying that the only increase that Mr. Lang has reflected in his budget request is the 5% compensation increase, the longevity compensation adjustments that were made throughout the course of the year for deputy marshals, and the internal equity adjustment that was approved for Mr. Lang earlier this fiscal year. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So my sheet is correct. The budget sheet is wrong. And then all the worksheets, all the work papers that I've been using, it's there, it's actually based on the correct amount.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mike, how you doing?
I'm doing well. I'm here today for the budgets of 813 and 416, which is roadside and court security. Starting with the simple one first, roadside 813, we've been running on $2,000 supplies and materials for the past two years. I'm asking to keep that the same, $2,000.
How's that working out?
Don't ask me how it's working, but it's working. We're going to be that one.
Through a lot of community support, huh?
Very much so.
Until they steal the catalytic converters off.
Yes.
Where's court security at on that?
They're golf activities. You want 24/7, we get you. Whack them from, we have big pits and stuff.
Yeah.
According to March for City Police, so that they actually went through this neighborhood, there was a lot of private vehicles that had there.
Kind of like a stolen or?
So we weren't, we weren't targeted.
I can't believe, and I've heard enormous amounts of them were stolen. I, I can't believe that you could go through and crawl under cars and trucks and cut that many off without getting caught. I mean, usually that's what happens, a thief gets caught because he's successful, so he keeps doing it until he gets caught, but.
It's pretty well lit over there in the evening, too.
Yeah.
I'm not too sure.
Not too many people looked under vehicles anyway, so.
And 416, court security. I did ask for an increase from overtime, from 15 to 50, am I correct?
Which is not reflected in your request, that would be, that would be a separate personal request.
The reason for that increase is, I've had some good meetings with the sheriff's office, and we're going to try to help them with mental hygiene trips. My guys will assist and take those. Primarily, I see my guys doing on weekends because they did during the week, they're going to have to double back and work.
Right.
We had some very good meetings. I see, I see it working, I see it working as well. I said, we're going to assist, I said, we're going to do them all. But we assist the sheriff's office, and that's why I'm asking for that increase on that. I think it's a win-win for everybody. My guys are more familiar with prisoner transport than most in the day. I think it's going to be a good addition, and working with the sheriff's office is always a plus. So that's, that's going to be really well.
So additional $35,000 for overtime?
Just primarily for the couple of trips. Never know how many you get in, you can't, it's more of a destiny, but anything will work. With that, next trip's going to be a great one.
Now that talk, including using their trip vehicle, I'm sure.
Mine is just personnel.
Right.
Personnel use of it. So I got some guys that are interested. Like I said, I see it happening more on weekends, Friday, Saturday, somebody from my guys who are on.
Are you talking about y'all doing it yourself?
We were right along. Instead of sending two deputies, we were right along.
Right.
We'd be the second. So, like I said, my guys are well versed in prisoner transport and all that. So I see it as one way.
All right. Anything else?
I submitted some supplemental, just to give you an update of what's going on, what we've done.
Go ahead and touch on that, highlights, but we got that.
You know, 2000, year 2020 was a very difficult year for the district center and the courts in general due to COVID. Last year, we had 89,563 people in front door under COVID.
That's still, that's a lot.
Restrictions. In the past two, three years, we've had 341,000 come into front door. So we're down about 40,000 of what we've been, been, but still locked. You know, four months, we pretty much blocked everybody from the door. You know, as I put in my report here, the court slowed, but we never closed. And we kept things going. With COVID, we worked around a lot of restrictions, still working around a lot of restrictions. But what I'm, I liked the most about it all, everybody come together and work together. You know, we're the first county in the state to have jury trials under COVID. Not one, we've had 12 in the year 2020 jury trials. That's unheard of.
Right.
You know, I owe that to facilities, they did a great job. Tracy Penny and all those, Alan, get me all the supplies and stuff you needed to, to ensure safety to the public and the workers. You know, we only had about six cases of COVID in that building. So I think all the precautionary measures are paying dividends. So. So that's the front door count. It was a total of 13,274 court cases that were heard in the year 2020 with a transport of 1,800 inmates. Last year, we had 3,200. So if I cut that in half, a lot of that was due to online teams and Zooming, arrangements and hearings and stuff. It's still 1,800.
Are you, Mike, are you thinking that, and this is more of a question for the prosecutor, but are you thinking there's some backlog on the, on court cases?
There's no backlog in magistrate court than in circuit from my layman experience and from, from being there. I think my wife Mary's been here since 1991. She said she's never had so many backed up files in her career. It just, it just keeps, it just keeps pounding on. You know, magistrate court, it's, it's mastery. We have two running every day, and it's nothing for them to hear 40 cases in the morning.
I've not heard that.
Yes. That's the morning. Wrong folks, people not paying the rent, they're just, they're still knocking down the doors. I don't see letting up any time soon.
Right.
It's a busy place, we stay busy. About when we think we overcome one hurdle, we have two more. But you know, we build a great team, we overcome every hurdle, it's thrown at us. It's, it's great. Roadside, you know, we started roadside June 2018. Since that time, we've collected 914 miles of roads. For a total collection of 7,464 bags. 4,129 larger items that couldn't be bagged just for 2020. I had a full guy in 20, a full-time guy in 2020, Alan Hart. And since doing that, having the same consistency out there every day, the same safety precautions, same, we've doubled our production. He cut the 3,700 bags last week. Yes, he's done a great job with it. Bad news is, we're at 8.16 per bag per mile, the roadside limit. I think some folks who catch one, they drop their furniture out on the road, we come pick it up. There's been a lot more of that being done.
So you're thinking that at one time, the bags per mile was going down?
We were down to almost under five at 1.2.
Right.
You know, with backup. And getting a lot of bulky items. I think you picked up 20, over 2100 bay items last year. And I'll get calls or emails, pictures, texts, accounts, you know, through middle of the road. And they keep dumping the same stuff, the same spot.
Do, do they still have the cameras from D?
We, we have some cameras out there, yes. We have four cameras out there. Speaking of cameras, they sold one. Down at Weaver Lane at the end where the Drufford's is, we have one down there. Yeah, they got, they got the store.
Did you have a sign up there that says there's a camera?
No. I mean, that red light sticks out like a sword.
Right.
So we kind of made it in, make these pictures this time.
I think some of those can be hooked up to there now.
We have two that are hooked up to Wi-Fi, the two.
Right.
One of the stolen was not. So, yes. Mr. Hart first and started them, I was in the, getting the pictures. He told me one day, he said, take me off of this, of all, you know, every car coming by and stuff like that.
Right, right.
Now, he, he's really doing a lot, he's, he's putting his whole heart and soul into it and the project is going well. My main concern is safety. I tell him, gain safety, don't do it. If that's it. You don't feel like that curve is a safe field, we don't. So I think with the future, we have some talks with sheriff's office, and they may help do some of road control.
Well, the reserves, the reserves would be great for that.
We're, we're headed in that direction, so.
Okay.
We got some good talks going on. One of the talks was using deputies when they're not assigned to the court, not going on, sitting that deputy out right there. We got some good talks going there. Community service, that's what we want is community service. Community service keeps knocking out park every day. I don't know if you're aware, under COVID restrictions, they were robbed of a couple of awards to be publicly announced. Boys and girls public, family and Steve both awards for their participation in helping. You know, roadside community service won the DEP award again. So and Alan Hart has one from Salt Wasteland. So with all the respective meetings and stuff, we want them to be publicly announced and stuff like that.
I understand Alan's got a wild turkey as a little partner, too, right?
That, that turkey followed him on Butts Mill Road. It's a pet turkey that someone owns that followed him up down Butts Mill Road, supervised him all, and it's, I got a big long story from Mr. Stubblefield about the person who owned the turkey.
Right, right.
So. Yeah, it's really going, going good things. But you know, community service, it was set up to, to help reduce the jail bill, which I think it's really done. Since the conception of it, I think we're like at $3.4 million, what I call a cost avoidance. We didn't actually say 3.4. If not for this program, we would have had to pay 3.4, which I usually turn to cost avoidance. But what this community service has done, we've become a part of the community with it. You know, like I said, the boys and girls public awards, that meant lots of things, Steve, they put their heart and soul into it.
Senior Senator, all, but there's a lot of good words coming back to us
Yes.
about the program.
Yes, sir. You know, community service takes care of all the ground maintenance, except for sportsmen's and pike side waterway. So every grass being mowed, every flyer bag, every, the whole parking lot being cleaned, that's all community service.
Right. Well, Steve, Steve the boatback is very energetic about making the planter in front of the new day report sign up nights.
He, he's, he's in heart and soul.
Yeah.
We pick, find people for it, family, I can't say enough good about her. She, she's took complete ownership program. Steve, I just get out of the way, basically.
Yeah.
It's that simple, how to stay out of the way. You know, we're even taking recyclers to all towns, we recycle and burn for the county. Just little things like that that no one sees that community service is doing could be added benefit to the county. You know, we're not paying somebody to go to the grass down. We're not paying somebody to recycle the people. We're, we're going all out for the sale.
Green Hill Cemetery appreciated all the work.
Green Hill Cemetery, very appreciative of all the work.
Right.
We've done good work down there the past couple of months.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a good program, it keeps the family unit together, it reduces the jail bill to the tiny taxpayers. But the program has, like I touched on earlier, it's become a part of the community, which I didn't see happening. It took me by surprise, I'm glad I'm part of it, I'm glad we started it, and I'm very proud of being part of it.
What do you think about, I talked to Mr. Zai not too long ago about juvenile, day report. And he's all over that and already checking with grant money and stuff like that, but also think that even community service as a juvenile could be a lesson well taught at a very early age.
It would be, I wouldn't have to get with the legal eagles and ask about that because with the adults and juveniles, there's a whole strike and sound policy.
They can't be together.
There's things that's going to have to, to be in place, safeguards in place to prevent that from happening.
Right.
But I can see it's going to, you know, when I took this position in March 2017, we just focused on court security. Now here we are today, we're talking about roadside leader, community service. We've come a long way, young. We've come a long way. And I'm just, I don't think we got started yet. The capabilities of what could be done, and that's to thank all y'all for the support, the proper equipment. You know, you can't go to a house with monkeys, they just don't work.
And the reason I thought about that, Mike, was juvenile drug court. You know, and it's, and plus, you know, people like Dan now, when we got in trouble that early in our age, you know, we, we turned around.
We talked about that one day in the office, no one knew what Pruney Town was.
Oh, I, I knew what it was, but I got threatened by Pruney Town.
That's all my mother threatened to send me to.
Actually, actually, what? Yeah.
I prefer you as a good girl, Penny.
I actually went to Pruney Town about three years ago and realized it was the actual place.
It is, she didn't make it up, she meant where she was going to send you.
Nah.
But you know, I'm all about the juveniles. My whole career's been incarceration of male, you know, let's keep the kids from going there.
Right.
Let's give them an avenue where they don't have to go there.
And most kids, and if, I'm gonna say some kid, and hopefully most kids, if you catch them and teach them right from wrong, they just need the right person to tell them that.
They need the right person.
Or get caught and confronted. So many times kids get caught today that don't get confronted.
Yes. There's no, there's no consequence for that action.
I, I think, and I just said it, I think that's the biggest thing, you know, when, I remember when when my wife and I first got together, she said, she said to me one day, she said, your kids listen to you because they fear you. I said, there's, they, they understand that there's consequences, and they know if they're going to go over that line, they're going to have to face those consequences. And it's not just here. They need to be taught that lesson because when they get older and they're out on their own, there's consequences for everything you do. And that's, that's one of the problems we have in society today is that, is that young kids, a lot of them aren't being taught that there is consequences. And so, you know, that's, you know, I remember when all this crazy burning, the cities and all that, you know, burning police cars and all that, you know, man, that would have went on back in the 60s and 70s. You know, that, that stuff would not have happened.
Well, I'm going to tell major, I remember watching the news at 10 o'clock, and they said, 10 o'clock, you know where your kids are.
Or the curcuse. You know? Always had to run home at night. I, I had to run home at night.
I had to be home on the streetlight, come on.
I can remember getting my butt whipped in school by the principal. And that wasn't what I was worried about. I was worried about I had to go home after that.
I think it's something we can build upon, I really do.
Well, Dan, Dan said something, and I, I tell young, younger adults the same thing. You know, when you get by with so much when you're young, and then when you become legal age at 18, you think that the same laws are in effect. You think that you have that flexibility, and all of a sudden, you're in jail or prison.
Different rules.
Right?
Right now, we're having juvenile detention for three kids that got incarcerated over the weekend. That's not charged, that's just three that got locked up over the weekend. And one involved 15-year-old gun. So we're all bored. I mean, there's probably had to be a lot of safeguards put in place, different office, different staff.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm sure it's something with Judge Cohen, everybody know Erica Riner, probation officer, she does the team. Drug court, not the team court, but the team drug court. She'll be all over. I think we got, we've come a long way. I think we've got a lot of good things heading our way to the immediate future.
We can take a good lesson from Camden Dawson.
Yes.
My, my son went there and he thought he was gonna rule what, what's happening. And I, I still remember he was going in there like a couple days and I'd give him a call, Mr. Delia, we're calling to inform you your son is playing AWOL. And I was like, what? I said, what, what?
I don't know where.
I said, what do I need to do? And, and the guy chuckled. He said, oh, don't worry, we'll get you.
We gotta have this real. You know, with the Maryland prison system, we have boot camp system. So I'm sure we can reach out to some of those guys and, and see what they're doing. You know, we, we built a great team of staffers over, over there. You know, people frisk now, but, huh. I think as a compliment that they're recognizing the talent we have. I need to make my sign up again. But I, I, I don't blame anybody for moving on and moving out. I just want to thank you all for giving us opportunity to grow the way we've grown. We've grown.
In a good way.
We've grown.
In a good way. And the people, like you said, people are, are seeing the sign. It's, it's a, a good thing. I have something bad. Uh, we talked last week, we gotta figure out a way of breaking this cycle. And one of the ways to break it is to, to start younger, you know, pitch right from wrong.
You know, our community service programs, we got some successful stuff.
I know you do.
You know, a lot of people, good success stories.
You know, like every time I, I catch somebody out in the parking lot that maybe landscaping the flyer beds or, or picking up, sweeping up trash and, or cleaning these hallways, they're good people.
Yeah.
You know, they're very polite. They, you know, they don't ever want you to shake your, their hand because we're dirty and they forget where most of us come from, you know?
With, uh, being supervisor in prison, we always had new hires coming in. And you'd always get John Wayne coming in. And I always tell them, you know, there's a fine line between us and them. It's one bad night.
Absolutely.
I've said that speech countless times. And that's true.
Yeah, being tested every night.
But no, we thank you for all your support. You know what you all have done. I, I couldn't even know this without your support. You know that I have a very grateful team for everything you all have done for us. You know, we're here. We're here for you.
Well, it's, it's a team. It's a team. You got a team, we got a team. When we're all together, we're one big team.
Fire. I tell people it's firing all cylinders. Berkeley County is firing all cylinders.
You guys, you guys welcome giving the prosecutor's office another tool, you know, and, and that tool is, just like you said, you've got some success stories. I mean, that's what that program was designed.
It doesn't work without prosecutors.
No, no, but it, that, that's part, that's the reason it was designed. It was designed to have them work. You know, have them understand that there is a cost for what they did, and this is the cost. And you have to, you have to do something to, um, to pay for what you did.
One thing Tammy does, she holds them accountable. You're supposed to be there working, she's on the phone. She does a great job of that. Like I said, I think we're just touching on tip of the iceberg, John. As times change, more things will happen for us in good way. I see yours, rise is being broadened every day.
Appreciate the hard work. You and all of your staff. It's been a blessing to work with you. Came a long ways over the years too.
You have.
Right?
Yes, sir, we have. We have put together a fine team, you know. It's a, it's, I've never had a job I woke up someday, I don't believe in it. And I don't have that either. Welcome to challenge everyone.
Penny, Penny, they always heard me say, my best day of the week is Thursday. You know, uh, but, uh, yeah. All right. Anybody else?
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you. Have a good day.
All right.
All right. Next on our agenda is Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor for budget presentation twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Good afternoon, sir. So everybody's been trying to rob us here today, uh, and over the, over the time, Will, so.
My hands in the towel.
Are you going to treat us the same way or what?
Absolutely, I am. Yes, I am.
I was told to torment you a little bit today, so I'll make sure I do a good job.
Don't know who, who possibly could have given you that instruction. First off, I'd like to start by saying thank you to both the council and to Mr. Davis specifically for the support I've gotten in the, what I call tumultuous start to my tenure as fiduciary supervisor. Uh, the fiduciary office has been extremely busy in helping family members and friends navigate the difficult and not at all self-explanatory waters of the West Virginia probate system. Uh, to illustrate, my office during just my tenure has opened approximately one hundred and sixty new estates since my tenure started just three and a half months ago. And, uh, we have also closed one hundred and forty estates, uh, during that same time. All the while collecting twenty-five thousand dollars, again, just in these past three and a half months. And it's also important to note, uh, we've been doing all that with just two full-time employees during this, mostly during this time, uh, with the support of Ms. Maria Childers, who's been kind enough, uh, to come back on a temporary basis to kind of help bridge the gap there.
She's enjoying that.
She, oh, she, she certainly does. And, uh, as, as she, she asked me to, uh, tell, tell the council that while she does enjoy it, it is temporary. I made that clear.
When I go down there and, uh, stick my head in the door, she's smiling.
She, she, she's very happy. She loves the work. And she obviously, this office is her life's work. So it's, uh, important that it's, uh, the work is done, is done correctly.
And she's been with resource.
Oh, she's been, uh, without it, I don't know where the office would be. Um, as many, uh, we've been talking about staffing issues, as many, if not all of you know, uh, my deputy Janet Holshouser has been, uh, ill with COVID nineteen. Uh, initially, she was diagnosed in late November of twenty twenty, uh, and she was hospitalized, but has since been recovering. Uh, even so, she has not been able to return to work physically, uh, since early December during all that time, uh, full-time, and it's just been myself and Ms. Judy Haven. I've spoken to Ms. Holshouser a lot, obviously. Uh, we want to keep her informed. And, uh, to say that, you know, she's ready to come back to work is an understatement. She has expressed very, very strongly to me that she cannot wait to not be at home anymore.
She's a fighter.
Absolutely.
Jan is a lovely person.
But, uh, as, as, you know, as sharp as she is, and she's as sharp as ever, uh, she wants to get back to work. But again, she's going through physical therapy now, uh, and trying to get off, fully off of oxygen. She's off of oxygen for the most part, but.
That's good.
Uh, we're, we're eager to get her, her back. I'm, I'm very proud of the work that, uh, our office has been able to achieve, uh, given these tough circumstances. But again, everybody is going through tough circumstances. So complaining about it is just the. I always believe though that we can do better. Uh, to that end, uh, I'm effectively asking for the exact same budget as my predecessor.
I see five hundred dollars difference here somewhere, Will.
That's true. Uh, I'm, there's one key add I'm asking this council, and I'm asking for additional funds to allow for one additional person, uh, to aid and to train under Ms. Householder, uh, Holshouser, excuse me, uh, for the remainder of her tenure. Uh, position would be called, uh, Assistant Fiduciary Supervisor Two, uh, at the position grade of ten. My reasons for this request are twofold. Uh, first, although I'm absolutely supremely confident in Ms. Holshouser's acuity and her ability, uh, she is still recovering from the silvers. And it has taken a significant fiscal toll. And the position itself at times, uh, given social distancing and everything, uh, that comes along with it, uh, it forces one to stand on one's feet for upwards of twenty to thirty minutes at a time, explaining the process and things like that. So having a person who could relieve that fiscal burden from her would be extremely beneficial. Uh, second, and I believe I mentioned it in my initial request, um, my own, uh, I guess, training period, uh, was a total of four days. And I am still in the process of learning this very, very complicated, uh, system we have for West Virginia probate. So having, uh, additional time for a support staffer to learn under Ms. Holshouser's three decades more of experience cannot be measured. Really what I'm looking to avoid is a quick turnaround as, uh, fiduciary supervisor role was. Um, I, again, I want to make it clear that Ms. Holshouser is very eager to get back to work. Uh, but she has indicated both to myself and additional staff that within the twelve to twenty-four months range, she may be looking to pull back or retire altogether. Um, so that's just something we, you know, again, for the immediate future to consider and for, uh, the future further down for the fiduciary office.
And she's talked about that once before. We, we had that on our radar, I know.
She has, um, in, in fact, it's been, I guess, a topic of discussion about the same time that Maria gave us, Maria, if you remember, gave us two years ago, I guess. Um, and at that time, Jan was gonna play it by ear, um, just to see how it went upon Maria's retirement. And then we actually were gonna build her into last year's budget. And then she indicated that, you know, she was planning on staying probably through twenty twenty-one. That's the last thing I had heard.
Yeah, and as, as far as I know, again, uh, I think that is the tentative plan, uh, through twenty twenty-one. You know, again, it's kind of tough as things are kind of up in the air, uh, as far as I've essentially told her. I mean, you know, we can't have you come in on oxygen clearly. So we gotta, we gotta get you physically right. But like I said, she's mentally as sharp as she's ever been. So it's just one of those things where it's, it's her decision.
So, so are we saying that, uh, and I'm a little confused with the whole, uh, what you're talking about. Are we growing? Are we hiring somebody to offset a training process in the thought that, that at some point, um, she will be leaving? Or are we growing the office to four, uh, to four people as opposed to three people?
Right now, all we're talking about is having somebody train, uh, for Ms. Holshouser's position just during that, uh, period until Ms. Holshouser ultimately decides she wants to retire. That's really all we're talking. We're not, uh, once ultimately that decision is made, uh, we're not talking about having two, uh, deputies fiduciary supervisors.
What, what I would recommend to the council, and we'll be in budget workshops in weeks. First, state workshop is scheduled for us first, if you so choose. Budget, the first half of the fiscal year as a training period, not knowing, um, when Janet may, may be retiring. But then we could take the other half, uh, of the salary of the position and actually put it into contingency. If you remember last year, we had six ninety-nine one, which was deputies, six ninety-nine two, which was airports, some other things. I know Will was reluctant to, um, and, and he's not overwhelmed. He's done a great job with, with the staffing that he has. But two weeks ago, we had a conversation about so many cases and so many people that they're, that they're dealing with. You know, when you're, when you're dealing with a state like this, you need privacy and confidentiality, and they really didn't have it. Um, so we have temporarily taken, um, that if you remember when, when we renovated the offices down there for fiduciary, we kind of cut off that one office, or the office that we cut out, we took the old desk out of, um, Mrs. Mock's office and moved down there and actually set that up as a, almost like a, a small conference room so that they would have some additional areas because they are sophisticated.
And that's been extremely.
Growth of the county, that will, that's gonna continue.
If I'm just listening to numbers, you said a hundred and forty cases and you closed a hundred and twenty. That tells me you're twenty ahead.
Well, so those aren't the same cases.
I understand, I understand. But if you just use numbers.
That's true.
If you just throw numbers.
It's losing ground, isn't it?
That's true.
You know, you're treading water and.
Oh, yeah. We're taking it up. No, uh, honestly, uh, when it comes to appraisements and, and to be honest, uh, it's part of what, why we can't just hire any old person to come into the, into the office is, it is hard to explain, even for myself. I mean, uh, a lot of people don't understand that just because they come into my office, they qualify as fiduciary, they get a letter of administration, they think they're done. Even if we're giving them additional forms, saying you have until X time to give it back to us. We've gotten those calls of, what do you mean I have to submit other paperwork? I thought I was finished. And, you know, it, it's, it's a process whereby, you know, once you open an estate, it's open. We have opened estates, uh, that we're trying to clear through legislative means, uh, you know, from two thousand nine, two thousand ten. They're just open and never, never shut. So right now, uh, Ms. Childers and I are kind of going through the legislative rigmarole trying to see if there's some way that, you know, our office can just unilaterally, if there's been no, uh, kind of movement in the last five, say, years of, of an estate, if we can just say, okay, we'll provide notice to those interested parties that within thirty days, if we don't hear anything from that, we're just gonna unilaterally settle it, uh, just to get cleared off the books. And, uh, I mean, that's just something that, it, it's certainly, every county deals with just open the states that are kind of in limbo.
At one time, they were catching up on a lot of those old estates. How you doing with those, man?
Uh, we're good. Uh, unfortunate, uh, Maria was, uh, the chief, uh, since she was here for a lot of them. Uh, we've been going through old boxes. And, uh, the other difficult part of it is we've, uh, since twenty fifteen, uh, we've changed systems, or at least we've changed the state management systems. So for a lot of these, we're actually having to go back into the old system and kind of, but, I mean, like I said, we've, we've made, uh, we've gotten through a couple of boxes of them, uh, but obviously that was kind of before. I, I found that in my very limited tenure here, uh, during the holidays, people really don't want to open estates. It's just something they'd rather not think about. Uh, so when January and February hit, that's when we were, that's when I asked Mr. Davis for the allotment of additional space, just because we were having five, six, seven, eight estates lined up in the hallway. And I'd rather not discuss family matters in front of other people. We're getting other folks saying, oh, I was hearing you talk about. It's not really much fun to hear.
When Jan was first diagnosed, um, at the end of last year, um, Judy, who was the other full-time person down there, actually had to be tested. Um, and there was a period of two weeks where Will was the only full-time employee that we had down there.
We got some people through.
Yeah. Um, and, and we had to, to redirect the telephones. Um, we, you know, we had the lines come up to Julie, to Julie in our office, and she handled the calls. And, um, but I, I just want to commend Will for, you know, kind of adapting on the fly. He never lost his sense of humor, never lost his hair. You know, and, and, you know, you talk about someone that, um, you know, baptism by fire. I mean, like you said, he had four days of training, then we just kind of threw him into that.
But not by choice, but yes.
Right. And, and he has done so willingly and, um, it has just, I mean, I can't say enough about the job that.
And he, and he maintains a good nature.
He does.
Which is, which is great.
Well, uh, like I say, complaining that everybody's going through something, uh, and if this is the worst that, uh, that has to happen for the fiduciary, this is not nearly what other people are going through. We're working, we're doing what we can. And I, I actually think, I mean, we're, we're doing, I mean, with Judy down there and she's doing a great job, with Maria's help, it is insurmountable. I can't even express how, how helpful she's been.
So, so if Janet is thinking of retiring at, at the end of the year. So, so if Janet is thinking retiring at, at the end of the year, and we're, you know, this budget's for July one, it's pretty much, I mean, you could say six months' time is very short.
Sure, uh, I know Ms. Petry, uh, I think she had something like eight months, uh, to learn under. You know, I'm, I'm willing to take what the, the council can give me on that, on time for, uh, training, uh, for this person. Uh, as far as is six months enough? I mean, I, I personally think it would be, uh, only because the assistant supervisor, the deputy supervisor, chiefly what I'm asking them to do is really handle bulk of, uh, correspondence, letters, uh, reminders, uh, answering phones, things like that, and being able to answer just point-blank questions, what do I need to do? Um, and right now, I'm kind of hand-juggling, doing that as well as handling walk-ins and everything else. So with, uh, the deputy position, it's, you don't really need to know the law as, as much. You just need to know the deadlines, you need to know, okay, well, this is that set of circumstances that Janet told me about before. I can apply that to this scenario, but because again, it really, there is no yes or no answer, as with many things with the, uh, with the law. It's yes, but also this is why yes. Um, it, for instance, I mean, there's no legal requirement that anybody open an estate. Uh, if everything's jointly owned, if, uh, there's no probate property, uh, I, you know, there's nothing you need to access. There's no need for you to open this, uh, probate estate on the surface. There might be an apartment, uh, that, you know, is requiring a letter of administration for you to just access, like, you know, those, those things that they held in the apartment. I mean, there's a million, as many different kinds of people there are in the world, that's how many, uh, kinds of estates there can be.
One of the thing, and, and, and what we would, what we would probably do, um, with, with the council's approval is once, you know, hopefully a month or so from now, we'll have budgets set in the levy document. Hands of the, the State Otters Office for review. If that position is included, of course, we would start the recruitment process right away. Um, if something happens that Will finds the ideal candidate before July first, when we, and you just approved State Budget Revision Number Eight at the end of January, um, we moved enough money into contractual services to fund Maria full-time through this fiscal year. And she has indicated that, uh, her desire is not to spend full-time contractual through the next five or six.
Five months.
Very correct. Um, we could actually take some of that money from contractual services and move it up to, to personnel lift through State Budget Revision.
I was always gonna say, Will's got a lot of moving parts, moving people, I should say, not parts, because, you know, Maria, um, is, is like a lot of our employees where they would never want a department not to make ends meet.
Right, right.
She's dedicated, even, even at retirement, she's dedicated to the department. Um, so Maria's, uh, stay, um, of helping us out, uh, would very much hinge on Janet's return. And Janet's return and her, um, another person that assisted her would make it easier for Maria to say, okay, it's time for me to back off, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, there's a lot of moving parts on the few people that you have.
No, it's, and, and it's, and I totally agree. I'm just trying to clarify what we're talking about, but it's, I totally agree. I think that it would probably make more sense to do it sooner than later.
Actually, that's what I was getting ready to say. I mean, especially, you know, later than, than the first of the, the new year.
Right, I would, yeah, I would, I would think there's enough time to find somebody before that and get that process started.
Well, we gotta have Janet here, didn't?
Well, and then the, the flip side, the flip side of that is if, uh, if she continues to be off.
Right.
You know, to, to have, have somebody in that, uh, spot that can, can learn and, you know.
Well, and.
He might, he, he might not be able to teach, uh, all the time, but at least he can get somebody doing something.
Sure, and, yeah, as Mr. Elliot points out, you know, it, it is, there are a lot of moving, yeah, you know, we, we pointed out, there are a lot of moving parts. Um, as far as, as Janet coming back, you know, obviously we, we want that to happen ASAP, but that's going to be limited to her physical ability. Um, so, you know, that, that's kind of unfortunately a question I can't definitively answer with counsel.
And I could see Janet come back part-time a little bit.
Oh, yeah, well, she, and that's why I didn't fully say retire necessarily. She isn't, it indicated, especially during this time where she has been only home all the time, nothing but, um, she's indicated that possibly she could just, uh, kind of move into a part-time position, partially retire, come in when she knows that we're busiest, um, and, and kind of help us out that way. So, I mean, that's, that's certainly up for, for discussion.
But even when she comes back, Will, she probably need to come back part-time for a, a little while.
I agree.
Right? All right, well, we didn't make Will's life miserable today.
We can keep him here.
You have to find a business, you know, he's young, he'll heal.
All right, Will, well, you, as, uh, as you heard, you've done a wonderful job with what we've had to work with. Um, and certainly do appreciate your efforts and, uh, and, uh, we, uh, have some decisions to make, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
So, we, we've got to be successful.
Absolutely.
Nice, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe, are you expecting anybody else? Here by yourself, all right? Next, our Janet, Joe Elliott, our Executive Director of Community Alternatives to Violence. Um, here to present your twenty-one, twenty-two budget request. So, first of all, I need to ask how things are going for you.
They're going.
Yeah.
Um, we are, uh, we're, we're getting there, we're moving.
I know at one time, um, Mr. Burke was really concerned about whether he was gonna make it through this or not, early on, very early on.
Yeah, so, um, I guess I can pick up our story there.
Uh, yes, please.
Um, so when the pandemic hit, like everyone else, you know, it, it nearly wiped us out. We weren't sure if we were gonna even be able to keep our. Um, through a lot of people deciding to do a lot of all of your work and laying off of our long executive director.
Went from three to two?
Three to two. Um, without missing a beat in the service we provided, um, we had an immediate reduction in our expenses. We ran in there over the course of two thousand nineteen, as in that we were able to reduce our expenditures by thirty-six percent. Fortunately, revenue also dropped. Biggest reason to lost money, both related to pandemic. First, in every, we usually have a giant fundraiser that we think that's about twenty-five thousand. Um, there were some folks that had already purchased tickets for it, already purchased sponsorships for it, and they went to that one that they think, if you really want your money back, they'll give it to you, and they all agreed, if you keep money and just credit them.
So you credit them towards the next fundraiser?
Yes.
Which will hurt you then, right?
Yes, it will, um, but if they had wanted their money back.
No, and, and I understand that. I mean that in a good way, but, but, but now, just so everybody understands, you won't be coming out of this situation anytime soon. Not unless your sponsors and people are very generous.
Right, and we would, um, have a hard time saying, please give us another.
So how much money were you talking about with the sponsorship and the people that bought tickets and weren't able to go about?
Um, I can find that quickly for you, um. We had some elimination dinner. We had received sixty-seven hundred in sponsorships. We sold some thirty-five million tickets, so a thousand dollars net came back. We graciously agreed to not, but you are correct. We do have our next fundraiser. We're hoping we can do something this year, but, you know, we're not really sure what this plan look like. Those would be tickets that we will honor. And the sponsorships, we'll have to honor those sponsorships. People will make the public. So even if we were to hold a fundraiser this year, we're not going to see.
So this was elimination dinner, you said?
It was elimination dinner, yeah. There was live auction, there was silent auction, and then elimination. Um, your, your tickets are numbered and they fall out, and eventually there's a pot of money.
Sure.
So, uh, we've discussed various topics of what to do, what can we do. Um, probably not gonna do another elimination dinner, but we do have, we, we've gotta do something. We have to do something, um, because that was twenty thousand that we lost. The other loss in the budget scheme, um, our primary stream of revenues were participant fees.
I'm sorry?
From the participant fees, those who come.
Which those were down because it's based on how much they get paid, right?
Got it, um, so they lost their jobs or their hours were cut, they couldn't pay. Um, for a while there, they didn't have Wi-Fi, and so cell phone didn't feed up with data, they ran out of data, they couldn't connect. I mean, these, these are the. And we never would turn anyone away from our program, particularly to pay, we can't even use service, offset fees. So that increased a little bit, so we, we took a massive hit. But again, by slashing our expenses, um, biggest one was going to free paid employees, two paid employees. Reduced all of our utilities, tried to reduce our. So the facilitators, um, historically, CAV has been able to pay facilitators and also or facilitating. We were not able to do that this year. We graciously agreed to volunteers. Um, we were completely blessed to get three, three people to reach volunteers for now. We're proud of the fact that we couldn't pay our facilitators. They are the heart, part of our organization. They are who we are. They, they do the work of what we do. Um, without the fundraisers, there's some speed are down. We can't even afford to bring in outside training. There's our license requires, it's like three hours every year ongoing. We try to be more than that. This field is ever changing. Right now, we pay.
What, what's your percentage, if you were to take a guess, what, during the impact, what's your percentage of success stories? Uh, through your program?
Well, we have been, we, we try to do recidivism study regularly. Last year, we shut down, it didn't happen, so this would be, um, the end of, you know, two thousand nineteen. Um, so if we look at those who complete our program, all the way, all the two weeks, if those we. Um, our recidivism rate for domestic, three years after completion is twelve percent. Which is brilliant. We think we're impressive.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, we, we all the time talk about, we gotta change the way, um, things happen, the mindset. You know, uh, last week, we was talking about, you know, we're feeding the children, it's, you know, we shouldn't be feeding, really. Should be the responsibility of the parents to have. But yet, who's gonna let a child go hungry? Now, we're talking to alternatives to violence, or, you know, how do you treat your spouse or loved one, right? Um, and, um, there's, there's all kinds of things out there that we, we need to figure out a way to change, and Tamey going through community service and see, you know, I'm sure she's flexing her muscle every day, you know, it's just, uh, we're doing such good work, but there's still a lot of work to be done.
There is, and that's, you know, one part of our spiel really is if we put the batter in jail for something costly, that's what, you're not learning.
Right.
Right, if you can send them over to us, we're, that just increases the stakeholders in the community that are willing to handle this violence. We can work to get them to be accountable, to be responsible, to minimize those belief system. Work to break that cycle of violence, so sure, they're not back in the judicial system, families are safe. That's the strength of what we do.
So, if there's, if you have somebody in your program that has participated in that type of action, do you, is there a program that reaches out to the children and makes sure they were affected by it?
So we work solely with perpetrators, yes, um, but we are mandatory reporting agency. So if we hear of anything, we have to report it immediately. Also, we have a memorandum of understanding, like, um, Eastern Community Product Center, the best program. And for terms of that license, we have to inform Epic of any corporals that we, that we bring in. And part of that is order children, so that is on them then, not us. Out to the victim, are you safe? Are the kids okay to go? But as with any agency, if we have a hint of child abuse, over, you say that we are mandatory reporting agency. But we are not able to reach out directly to the child.
Right.
Schools, um.
But they are checked upon.
They are checked upon, yep. Have kiddos or the parents of kiddos, we got CPS referrals, um, that were part of the improvement. For families to get their kids back.
So, in a non-COVID year, how many folks would you normally be working with?
That's an interesting question. Um, previously, we were averaging about a hundred, two hundred and twenty at a time. The, our program actually grew. Uh, in the immediate shutdown, firms practically disappeared, of course, revealed they were dealing with domestic, failed out a little later. And once they started dealing with domestics, we expanded to over a hundred and forty.
And how long would you have them in your program?
So it's a thirty-two week program. If they come without missing any classes, which is unusual, it's eight months.
Wow.
Yeah, it, you know, I mean, we're dealing with lifelong beliefs, so we can't, there's no shortcut. It takes a long time. We've got folks saying, yeah, they come twice a week, we can't handle it. You know, it, we're, we're dealing with some tough stuff. It really does take that long.
Then are you saying eight week, eight, you said eight months? Eight months?
I said week.
One, one day a week?
Yeah, ninety minutes once a week. Uh, we actually added events over, uh, events class right now, so currently we have three weeks classes running, and we have seven months classes running right now. Uh, we were able to, thanks to Zoom, we were able to keep going, so we have secret online classes, which is not the ideal. You can't really judge body language, and demeanor is the part of the job. But it is working.
We used to have, have the classes up there in the cafeteria one time, right?
That would've been before my time. I know we've been in very places.
Yeah, yeah, there were classes up there.
It's still not a lot of time. I know, we talked forty-eight hours or something of actual time, right?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, it, it is a long time, uh, and we, we are under the license that, that we work under, this is thirty-two program. Um, I actually, there, there's good grounds for us to try and log in state legislature to use that time, so we're best. Um, I'm on a, every Friday, I'm on a call, uh, votes around the country, and a lot of states do have all programs. But that's down the road.
I guess your, your budget presentation is asking for five thousand dollars?
Yes. Uh, yeah, that would help with, uh, recruiting and training facilitators and maybe, you know, funding a little bit. Um, like I said, right now, everyone, everyone volunteer. Eagle Lab did give us a five thousand dollar grant, you know, last couple days of nineteen, that is, excuse me, of twenty, that is for this year to, um, pay for some facilitating. But, you know, the math is not high, um, with twenty classes, the idea would be so that you could last like twenty little meters, sort of, you could make eighty-five dollars per facilitation. So five plus twenty, that's fifty-two-ish. We're rebuilding. Round up. This would, this would definitely help with the recruiting, get more facilitators, um, be able to get some outside training. Round up. This would definitely help with the recruiting, get more facilitators, be able to get some outside training. Which right now is on Zoom, it's actually a little less expensive right now.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I see, probably income. Squeeze money from a lot of people. And, you know. I mean, that's the only way you have to get by, I assume, I don't know if there are any grants, depend on grants, or?
We're working on that. It's been tough to get grants, a lot of grants are for direct victim services, which we've got direct victim services. But with the chain bringing me in, it's effective, directly now that my task is to figure out what the grants are. Obviously, we just get $5,000 from Ecolab. Eastern Western Agent Free Generations, last year, French lab, one of the people who was able to give me the money. And I got three months of French from them, they just gave us $1,000 to upgrade our software, we have very good software to post. I could take their online classes. So, yeah, we are at the mercy of that enclosure.
You would think the DHR would be more involved in what you do.
Well, they do send, send us votes, and when they do send someone, then there is a court for, court will pick for them. People think they'd be responsible.
Was the, was the grant from Ecolab, was that actually from Ecolab, or was it a match from one of their employees?
As I read it, it was just Ecolab.
Because I know, I think, because it doesn't, Ecolab didn't, it wasn't P&amp;G that said the same thing that they do. If their employee, one of their employees were to give you $1,000, that P&amp;G would match that $1,000, take you $2,000.
Yeah, they get to pick the phone.
I'll reach out to P&amp;G, thank you. Anyone else you want to mention?
You catch that?
Yes, thank you.
I think the employee is able to pick a, a nonprofit, then they would. All right, well, Mr. Burke, all right?
That was Mr. Schultz, but yes.
Schultz, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, I caught that because of the same locker, he didn't register with me for second.
Larry, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Schultz, he's doing well, he is doing two of our classes now.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess Penny, we can take a break, and we'll be back in since there's no by here.
You're on.
All right, we're back in session. Nobody's here from the public. Um, we can go in, um, we could do a motion to adjourn Sine Di. Mr. President, I'm going to adjourn in a word of equalization in the G, Sine Di. All right, have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion, case.